Good evening, everyone. I call the order of the special, the regular scheduled meeting. Sorry, of the Dearborn City Council, 34th City Council. Everyone, and tonight, can you please silence your cell phones or communication devices, not to disturb the meeting? Mr. Clerk, can we have the roll?
Councilmember Inos.
Here.
Councilmember Hamud.
Here.
Councilmember Abraham.
Here.
Councilmember Paris.
Here.
Councilmember El-Sawafi.
Here.
Councilmember Herrick.
Here.
Council President Serini.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Can we have the first item in business?
Invocation?
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize. That's right, thank you, George, it's my turn. At this time, I'd like to turn the meeting over to Council President Pro Tem, Leslie Herrick.
Thank you. It is my honor to introduce Ms. Deborah Crandall from Solid Rock Church will deliver tonight's invocation. I invite all who are able to please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I'll sit down.
Yeah, I'm sure, yeah, if you don't mind, the pastor's here to read, you can fill that out at your chair.
If you all bow your heads, and we're going to sincerely come before the Lord tonight and ask for His blessings. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for the freedom to be able to meet together in this place and to be of service to our community. We thank you for your love, grace, mercy, and forgiveness. We ask for peace to be in the hearts and minds of each person present in this meeting tonight and to move throughout the city. I ask you to bless this meeting with unity and a purpose to serve the city and its citizens. Lord, I ask for a divine wisdom to be imparted to each council member as they make decisions that impact the citizens of this great city. Let them not grow weary in well-doing, Lord. Give them strength of mind and body. Let each council member recognize and follow your guidance. Cause each member to look to you as they make decisions considering the benefits and repercussions of those decisions. I ask you, Lord, to keep your hand of protection on each council member and their families. I ask you, Lord, to bless our mayor with wisdom, guidance, and compassion as he leads our city. I ask you to protect and keep our first responders, police, and fire departments as they protect and serve our community. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Council members?
I want to say thank you for your service. I appreciate each one of you, and God bless you.
Thank you, God bless you too.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Crandall. All right, Mr. Clerk, can we have the next item in business?
Item number four, resolution by councilmember Hamud, supported unanimously, recognizing Dearborn resident Carrie Wicker for her continuous city beautification efforts and requesting immediate effect.
All right, thank you, Mr. Clerk. We have a couple of these citations tonight, two of them. So I'm gonna read them individually, and then we're gonna ask for the members of the, to come forward, to take some photos, and get their awards. I think one of them was hand-delivered.
Oh.
Is that correct? So one we're gonna, only one will be recognized officially. So, on this one, I think we have some pictures on the screen. The citation was hand-delivered to Ms. Wicker by the council, by Councilman Mustafa Hamud. And he would like to recognize her, and of course, the council supports it regarding "A welcome to Dearborn" sign located on Southfield and Outer Drive. She is taking care of this on her own time, energy, there's a great photo there on the screen, watering, planting, on her own resources to enhance her community. Her commitment to beautifying the city not only reflects her love for Dearborn, but also serves as an inspiration and an example to how individuals can unite their community together. So Councilman Hamud, would you like to say a few words?
Yeah, I mean, I kinda discovered this on accident. I was driving with my wife to TJ Maxx on the hill, and I saw this person standing in front of the "Welcome to Dearborn" sign, working on it, and it was a Sunday, and I'm like, there's no way we have city contractors working on a Sunday, you know, they work hard, but not that hard. So, you know, I hop out of the car, I go, hey, do you work for the city? She goes, you know, she thought she got caught. I'm like, no, 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 please, like, this is really, really great, and I really appreciate, it's something we talk about all the time, which is, you know, residents, as much as we as the government try to do our part to beautify the city, part of it also does come down to individual, small actions on each block, each home, and each neighborhood. So, this is one of those things that I really talk about all the time, and I really wanted to highlight here, where, you know, I thought it was awesome, and more importantly, in kind of like in a humorous, but also like, you know, interesting way, was, her daughter always makes fun of her for it, because she plants the plants, there's no, the sprinklers that are actually around the sign don't actually turn on, so the plants die if she doesn't water them enough, and then she goes back and replants new plants regularly, all throughout the season, as they die off, and so it's a labor of love for her, and I thought that this is something, you know, all residents, in my opinion, could aspire to, which is, you know, to continue improving the city, even if you don't think that your labor is being noticed, or maybe it seems futile, and your family makes fun of you for it, still, you know, please, go out and try to make your small mark on the city, because some people do realize it, and I do wanna make sure that people like this are recognized. So this was awesome, thank you.
No, thank you for bringing it forward, Councilman, and I wish you could be here tonight, but I know she was unable to attend, but I appreciate you hand-delivering it on behalf of the council, so. Any other questions or comments? Okay, unanimous roll shall be attached, next item.
Item number five, resolution by council President Serini, supported unanimously, recognizing city master electrician Eric Hutari for his excellence in service and requesting immediate effect.
All right, I'd like to take a moment here to recognize our city of Dearborn's master electrician Eric Hutari for his outstanding service. We have consistently heard from our departments throughout of his exceptional praise for the city staff of him for his professionalism, reliability, and his dedication. Whether responding to routine maintenance or complex emergencies, Eric is known for his craftsmanship, his responsiveness, and his integrity. We're grateful to have someone of this caliber ensuring the safety and quality of our city's electrical work. On behalf of the 34th Dearborn City Council, I'd like to thank Eric for his continued commitment and excellent work for the people of the city of Dearborn. We have a Public Works and Facilitators Director, Director Hawkins, and I believe Deputy Director Golich here, that actually brought this to the council, so, I don't want no one thinking at home that we're going around testing electrical products here, not me, but I could tell you what, when a director wants to recognize an employee for their work, it means something. So, Director?
Tim Hawkins, DPW Director. We really appreciate Eric. You may or may not know, Eric has completed two electrical apprenticeships for employees for us. He is the master of record, and he had taken two gentlemen in, and ran them all the way through the program, and made them journeymen electricians. That's outstanding. That will carry on far beyond the city, that is a lifelong achievement for young people, so, no, and his work throughout the city is stellar, hands down. We get a call, he's out there, right away, takes care of it, there's no returning, it's just completed at time of need, so, yeah, we really appreciate Eric.
Well, we appreciate that, Director, for you bringing it forward, and as many people know, I mean, electrician trades are very, very demanding in the public realm right now, so, and I know with our compensation studies, and our pay has definitely gotten better, but we do appreciate it, 'cause I know that they could go out and maybe make a little bit more money, but it says a lot when someone takes under a master electrician the journeyman card and allows them to groom and grow, it says a lot, and we really do appreciate it, not only for our city, but for those two individuals to have a chance to be under a master electrician for the future, so.
And he's currently got a new apprentice working with him daily here, so, this will be his third.
That's excellent.
It's fantastic.
Councilwoman Herrick?
Thank you, Council President. I'm trying to remember when Eric started working for the city, was it about eight years ago?
About 10 years ago.
10 years ago. I met him when I was working for the Dearborn Community Fund on the Homecoming Festival with the core team that plans Homecoming, and Homecoming is a big production, it requires everybody that works for the city to pitch in, and Eric was pretty new to being an electrician for the city, and I remember, we need to make sure that everybody in the tents and the different booths have their electrical hooked up, and there's always some snags, last-minute things to deal with, and that's where I first met him, was on a super-hot summer day, getting ready for Homecoming, and he didn't question a thing, he jumped in, and he was everywhere we needed him, like, all weekend long, and it just made such an impression on me, and I tell him every time I see him, he's one of my heroes that works for the city, because he doesn't let things faze him, and he's a team player, and obviously, he looks out for those who are working with him, that he's given opportunities to those who are following him, so he's continued to do that since the day I met him, so I'm so glad that we're able to honor him in this way.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Herrick, so at this time...
Wait, Council President?
Okay, Chief, yeah, you have some?
I mean, I can't.
Absolutely. Chief of Staff?
Do you have to turn my mic on, please?
Okay, there you go.
Thank you very much, of course, I would have to interject, because there is no better time and moment, especially for the administration, than when we are highlighting the great achievement of a member of our team. And I wanna start off by saying that this actually was an email, and I was talking about the team effort, right, because I think that when you build a strong team across different divisions and departments, it's not rare that you get an email from an assistant fire chief praising the work of Eric. And aside from having an amazing demeanor and respect for the work, for the people he works with, he also leaves a lasting impression, with a smile on his face, but I think, you know, knowing, you know, just to touch upon the Council President's comments about this trades, especially electricians, and how hard it is to really find good, talented individuals that wanna work and commit, but for the commitment that he has put in for the city of Dearborn, we are fortunate, and we are so happy to have him here, and I just wanted to echo a lot of, just not the sentiments of this administration, the mayor, but the whole city of Dearborn team, who's very proud of the work that Eric does, and we're super-excited to continue the work and continue to mold electricians for the future. So I think that we've come to an understanding that we may not be able to keep them, but while they're here, they're under some great leadership and guidance, and very happy for that. So I also have a certificate from the mayor, and if, Council President, if you don't mind, I know we love taking pictures, so...
Yeah.
Once we're done with the council, I'd love to take the, you know, the leadership from the Department of Public Works as well, and some of the members of our team, to be able to take a picture afterwards as well.
Absolutely, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you, so we're gonna take a quick breakdown for the council to come down, and then we'll have the Chief of Staff also representing the mayor for Eric. Eric, if you'd like to come forward?
Yep.
Council President, if I could just send you a picture of that?
Right. Eric, nice to meet you. Nice to meet you. Eric, step away, Eric. I got shot, I was 223 days chicken roasted, and my parents' restaurant said I would never touch you, so I just... We all have one... Yeah, I'll never mess with you, so I have it. Yeah. You're a good kid. Everybody in? Tiptoes. Who's up? Eric, come, just turn those side ways. Remember, like... Right. Can we get the... Right, communication, right, communication, yeah. Thank you. This is yours, this is yours. Right here, in the back. Tim, you're too short, you gotta get the plug.
I'm so curious, I know, it's really special, it's... Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Did you try to... No. I switched it, but it just went wrong. I couldn't get it to go off.
Oh, that's nice. All right.
All right, keeping it in order, there you go. All right, thank you, everyone, for that brief intermission. It's always great under our council, we have really took pride in recognizing and highlighting the things of our employees and our residents, and there's so much good that's happening around Dearborn, so, we feel it's very necessary to make sure that we share that with our residents, so. A unanimous roll shall be attached. So we're gonna go on to the next item, Mr. Clerk?
Item number six, resolution by councilmember Hamud, supported unanimously, offering condolences to the family of Shadi Savi Hadi Salin and Salan Shadi Sharara, and requesting immediate effect.
Councilman Hamud?
Yeah, so, on behalf of the Dearborn City Council, we extend our deepest condolences to the Charah family, following the tragic loss of their loved ones in the recent airstrike on Midtishbe, Lebanon. Our hearts are heavy as we mourn alongside all those who grieve the loss of those precious lives. The Charah family is deeply connected with Dearborn, and their passing is not only felt abroad, but here at home among friends, neighbors, and relatives. We condemn the violence that has brought such pain and suffering, and we pray for peace, healing, and justice. In this time of unimaginable sorrow, we hold the Charah family in our thoughts and prayers, and we stand in solidarity with all those mourning in Lebanon and around the world. Our hearts go out to them in this difficult time, may their memory be eternal, and may their loved ones find comfort in the strength of the community and embrace of their faith. We offer all of our most heartfelt sympathy and most sincere condolences to their family.
Thank you, Councilman Hamud, and a unanimous roll shall be attached, next item.
Item number eight, resolution, I'm sorry, resolution in need of offering support approving all the items of the consent agenda and requesting immediate effect.
Hang on, I'm sorry, so, Mr. Clerk, we're gonna go to the public comment first, item six. I know we took it out of order because we had a walk-on. Correct?
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Item number seven is the public comment?
Yeah, so the items are one-off now, is that correct? But I think we corrected it on mine, right?
Yeah, mine is correct as well.
Okay. All right, so, item number seven is our public comment, so the council rules were enacted on this term to allow us 30 minutes before public comment, prior to our business items, to better serve our residents. If anyone here would like to address the council, we ask them that they fill out one of these cards, so we can take you in an orderly fashion, and just a kind reminder, there's a three-minute limitation, and the clerk will let you know when there's 30 seconds left. Just another kind reminder, please, you are addressing the council, not anyone else, or not turning to the audience, you're addressing the council, okay? And please, for everyone in the audience, be mindful that we respect and want to hear what you have to say, in order to do that, we need to run an orderly meeting and make sure that everyone stays quiet, and that there's no outbursts, so that they can, the person upstairs here can have their time to speak. All right, so, and the first card we have is Ms. Andrea Unger.
Hello, Andrea Unger, Dearborn, Michigan. I've been working with the city of Dearborn for over two years now about the violation of the noise ordinance and the invasion of our privacy inside our yard and home. My husband and I have lived in the same house in East Dearborn for over 40 years, and we've never experienced harassment from the mosque on Shafer until the last two years. When I spoke with the city council and the mayor, I was told, the mayor's office and a council member had requested and received a permit to allow a mosque to use loudspeakers to play the prayer to Allah in Arabic multiple times daily. Our city ordinance does not permit unusual, annoying sounds of five minutes or longer, but the mosque continues to violate our privacy inside our home daily. The Supreme Court has stated that no public school may have a specific prayer to a specific god, yet this prayer to Allah is prayed on loudspeakers. I live right by Lori's school. It's over our school grounds and our playgrounds daily. There is no atheist, Christian, Jewish, Catholic, or other group that is allowed to use loudspeakers to blast a five-minute prayer into the homes of people in the Dearborn community. We have a quiet, clean, cooperative neighborhood of diverse backgrounds, cultures, where neighbors look out for, and we care for one another. This is an infringement on the privacy of my home and that of my neighbors. The freedom of religion allows me to believe and worship wherever and whatever I choose, the same for others of differing beliefs. Your freedom of religion does not allow you to force me to listen to your prayers in my yard or home, when you could do this by your app, or text, or phone, or email, or inside your own walls. For Muslims to be faithful to their religion, they are not forced to amplify their voice on prayer. I'm respectfully requesting immediate action to stop the loudspeakers, which violate our noise ordinance, as the Dearborn Community Center has already said that they are doing. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Unger, I know we've talked a few times, and I know the chief was compiling some data, and the council did get some data back, but, Chief, if you just wanna briefly speak on this, on what we're doing for the next stages, and I know we have talked a few times, so, and just as you're aware for the record, there's no ordinance that has been changed or altered for noise ordinance for any institution, and everyone has to follow the same rules. So, Chief?
Good evening, Isa Shaheen, Chief of Police. So as it relates to the call to prayer, we've taken a number of readings over the last several years. We haven't had a violation of, or anything in excess of the decibel reading since January of this year, and so, the two or three violations that we have had in the last couple of years have been met with compliance, as soon as we've talked to the religious institutions. It's no different than church bells that you might hear on Sunday.
Shaheen.
Okay.
The ordinance...
No outbursts from the crowd, please, okay? Folks, if you'd like to address the crowd, address, you can fill out a card, and we can have you speak, okay?
The ordinance prohibits any loudspeakers or any use of a loudspeaker between 10:00 PM and 7:00 in the morning. There were some complaints recently that there was a call to prayer before 7:00 in the morning, we weren't able to identify the house of worship that was coming from, but again, in response to these three complaints that we received, we went to all the houses of worship, Muslim houses of worship, and told them that they can't use the call to prayer before 7:00 in the morning. If we have or can identify mosques that's doing it before 7:00 in the morning, or if there is an excess of the decibels, that we've written a citation.
Okay, so that's, I think, Ms. Unger, that you were looking for, what is the next step, because I'm sure you had an agreement...
Could I ask a question?
Yes.
It does, it does not allow loudspeakers in our ordinance, that was never changed. Loudspeakers are not allowed in our ordinance, so the decibels are another matter, but the loudspeakers have never been allowed, until two years ago, when it was brought up, and it was not approved. So I'm just curious what the change was that allowed them to do it.
Yeah, I...
There has been no change.
Yeah, I'm gonna have Councilman El-Sawafi, he would like to maybe speak on that.
No, just, you asked, was it, you stated that there was permits issued?
That's what the mosque had told us, that they were given a permit.
Was there any permits issued?
No, there's no permit issued to allow for it. It's just within the guidelines of the noise ordinance to be able to do it during the hours of 7:00 in the morning to 10:00 PM at night.
Yeah, that's all I had. Just wanted to clarify that.
So loudspeakers have not been changed into the ordinance?
No, there has, the ordinance has been the same for many, many, many years, never been changed, and where, if some organizations are taking upon themselves, it's a violation of the ordinance, and we will be addressing it, because we, everybody has to follow law the same. So we will address it, and we have been addressing it, but to the point of, as the chief had indicated many times, if you've been here, making a mark of where the loudspeaker could go to, to what extent, taking the knob off, and, Chief, if you'd like to speak?
Yeah, I mean, well, so the one time, when we first started to address this issue back in early 2004, and we had a house of worship that was above the legal limit, we went into the mosque, and we said it at a reasonable tone, took a reading, it was acceptable, and then we actually took the knob off and marked it, and said, this is what needs to stay. So, look, we do our best to work with all houses of worship, and all residents, and all community members and business owners to get compliance. The one thing I'll add, oftentimes when we take readings, Council President, it's the ambient noise that's even louder than the call to prayer, to be honest with you, the truck will go by, hit a pothole, and it's much louder than the call to prayer.
Okay. Well, Ms. Unger, is the other question, we got amplified sound, as far as loud on the ordinance, and I believe you're correct on that.
Right, I think that's the crux of the matter, yeah.
Right. So, we're definitely, that's something would not be with the chief, the chief is gonna, is in charge of the violation and measurement. So what we'll do is, we'll have Jackie, our staff, look into that ordinance, and we'll refer it to legal to give us an opinion back on it.
I appreciate that.
Of course.
Thank you.
All right, have a good one.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Okay, next we have Noah Mullins.
Noah Mullins, Grand Rapids, Council. I have the privilege of serving as the Turning Point USA Chapter President at Grand Valley State University in Allendale, Michigan, and I traveled home tonight to speak with you because of how disturbed I am by recent events in this city. On September 8th, 2025, leaders of this city made their allegiance clear. Osama Sablani is a terrorist sympathizer, full stop. I speak on behalf of Americans everywhere when I say that renaming the corner of Warren Avenue in Chase to honor this individual stands against everything this great country represents. Americans do not stand by silently when Hamas and Hezbollah terrorists slaughter innocent men, women, and children. Neither does Mr. Sablani, but instead of denouncing these terrorist organizations like Americans should, he describes Hamas as freedom fighters, and describes the former leader of Hezbollah as a hero. I was born in this city, and I no longer recognize my beloved Dearborn. On September 9th, Mayor Hamud decided to add insult to injury and rebuke a Dearborn resident who brought to light this very issue. Mayor, know that your rebuke of me will fail to make me yield, and that you have revealed your true nature to all of us. As if these two events weren't enough, the city has also decided to not enforce their own noise ordinances by allowing the Islamic call to prayer from local mosque at times as early as 5:30 AM. Men and women across America are waking up to the state of our city, and all eyes are on Dearborn. I'm a 22-year-old man, but I am willing to give all of myself, and even my life, to the defense of my land, my people, my lord, and my future wife and children. My future wife and children deserve to live in a safe and prosperous Metro Detroit like I did growing up. If our region is to continue down the path of Dearborn and Hamtramck, what will become of us? Will our culture be diluted and erased like we are currently witnessing in Europe? The peoples of Europe are the siren call to us here in America, do not let Islamic culture dominate our own. This is the unfortunate scenario we find ourselves in, but I am proud to be one of the many voices that will warn my fellow countrymen of this impending threat, starting in the city I was born, Dearborn. This city put the world on wheels and helped make the state of Michigan the powerhouse that it is. How then does it fall from such grace? It is because we have let this city be overrun by so-called leaders who don't adhere to the Christian and American values that made the West the greatest society the world has ever known. I will certainly use my voice to defend our way of life, and it shall not be silenced in life or in death. In ending, I say to those of you who will slander my character and drag my name through the press for what I have said here tonight, know this, to be Islamophobic is to fear Islam, and I will never fear it. As the great Nathan Hale once said, "I only regret that I have but one life to lose for my country." May the Lord Jesus Christ bless all of you, our great nation, and our brothers and sisters across the sea in Europe, our Lady of the Rosary, pray for us. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next we have Ryan, yes, I can, well, I want you to say it when you come up.
Warzniak.
Warzniak, okay.
Good evening, Council, my name is Ryan Warzniak, and the mayor has previously scolded concerned residents and told them to leave the city, while in the same breath implying that he is the arbiter of peaceful coexistence. I understand that he identifies very passionately with the culture of the land he descends from, but he is not there. America became the country all of our ancestors chose to leave their home cultures for, because we Americans did not just peacefully coexist, but because we assimilated and became one. Decrying any criticism towards your choices as hateful is not only counterproductive, but entirely wrong. Americans quarrel with words so we do not need to resort to violence, because we care enough about our neighbors to give peace a chance. By deflecting any criticism of your choices using meaningless buzzwords like Islamophobia, it robs us all of the opportunity to peacefully change the other's mind. If the broader Muslim population in America does not start to act like Americans, not just Muslims in America, our children will shed blood, because the egos of Islamic leaders like Mayor Hamud are so large, they refuse to consider that they can possibly be wrong. In 50 years, when several nations of Western Europe become majority Muslim, and Islamic rule is imposed upon the ethnic Christian Europeans, the reaction in the United States will be very extreme. Unless the Muslim children are as undeniably American as mine, many of our children will die fighting each other, because Islamic leaders did not... Our Lady of the Rosary, pray for us. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next we have Ryan, yes, I can, well, I want you to say it when you come up.
Worsniak.
Worsniak, okay.
My name is Ryan Worsniak, and the mayor has previously scolded concerned residents and told them to leave the city, while in the same breath implying that he is the arbiter of peaceful coexistence. I understand that he very, he identifies very passionately with the culture of the land he descends from, but he is not there. America became the country all of our ancestors chose to leave their home cultures for because we Americans did not just peacefully coexist, but because we assimilated and became one. Decrying any criticism towards your choices as hateful is not only counterproductive, but entirely wrong. Americans quarrel with words so we do not need to resort to violence because we care enough about our neighbors to give peace a chance. By deflecting any criticism of your choices using meaningless buzzwords like Islamophobia, it robs us all of the opportunity to peacefully change the other's mind. If the broader Muslim population in America does not start to act like Americans, not just Muslims in America, our children will shed blood because the egos of Islamic leaders like Mayor Hamud are so large they refuse to consider that they can possibly be wrong. In 50 years, when several nations of Western Europe become majority Muslim, and Islamic rule is imposed upon the ethnic Christian Europeans, the reaction in the United States will be very extreme. Unless the Muslim children are as undeniably American as mine, many of our children will die fighting each other because Islamic leaders did not teach them to respect the institutions of the Christian country they chose to live in. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Let me ask the city, he's from, please, he didn't say.
Yeah, he doesn't have to say. All right, next we have Justin, Justin? Okay, great. It's hard to read the last name, so when you come up, sir, I appreciate it. Kandar, maybe?
Good evening, and my name is Justin Kandar. I'm a proud Jordanian-Palestinian-American, and I'm here to discuss the mayor's repeated aggressive conduct towards his own residents, simply for having a different opinion than his own, which has proven to be not only impulsive and unbecoming of a mayor, but dangerous, as it gives our people, people of Arabic descent, a terrible name by telling law-abiding pastors that they are not welcome in Dearborn, and that we will throw a parade upon their departure from this city, a city that the mayor does not own, but serves. This is precisely the same disturbing yet familiar pattern we've all been witnessing across the country. First, someone with a different opinion opens a dialogue, then, without hesitation, that person is quickly shouted down, insulted, and labeled. Next, that person is canceled or silenced. In this case, the mayor actually urged his residents to move out that doesn't agree with him. Finally, as the mayor stated, they then celebrate upon that person's demise or departure, in this case, with the promise of a parade, all for the crime of having a different opinion. What this mayor still fails to realize is that that was an invitation to inform. He could have bridged this divide with this pastor had he simply set aside his own obvious contempt and merely reciprocated in peaceful dialogue, but he proved his own deep-seated contempt instead. Without exception, in every city, a mayor's primary duty is to unify and serve all residents, not just the residents that he likes. If we do not like someone's opinion, we are expected to engage in dialogue, or simply remain silent. That standard is much higher for a mayor. Just as Palestinians feel about the occupation of their homeland, the Arabic renaming of an American street, or the Arabic insignia on police uniforms may invoke similar feelings. Although I don't agree with everything the pastor said, having any semblance of integrity means that it makes it obvious that he isn't filled with hate towards Arabs. Why else would he live here? The claim that diversity is celebrated seems to only be true when that, that diversity is the one that's desired. The reality is, this world isn't made of copies of us. We are all called to discuss complex issues in a loving manner. Labeling others as Islamophobic just simply for having a different opinion isn't brave, it's cowardly. It sounds a lot like being called anti-Semitic for being against a brutal occupation. Insulting and silencing are not only childish, but they only serve to reveal one's own hate. This pastor is not Middle Eastern and does not have the knowledge that we have.
You have 30 seconds?
Our knowledge is built from our roots and experiences, which is likely far outside what this pastor has ever had the chance to learn. We all know that the media never tells the full story, so how can you fault the pastor for that? How can any, excuse me, it is incumbent on us, the ones who supposedly know better, to discuss and inform with love and compassion. It is often the only chance many of our fellow Americans will ever have to hear the other side of what they've been told their entire lives. The mayor made a mockery of our people in our city when he could have and should have chosen love and compassion to bridge a divide and unify the city. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, now, we have Jasper and Indir.
Respected council members, I'm Jasper Singh Dillon, 86-years-old, living at 22725 Oakstead Street for over 10 years. I have a spinal injury and handicapped to walk around with a stick or hat. I have, it's very hard to do that. I and my wife, who is also handicapped, we live at that place. Now, what happens, they have moved the parking spot, which is very convenient for us to come and out of the house. I have been, we have been doing it, I've been living there. Now, my humble submission to all of you, to please let the parking space stay as it is. We, I have, we have requested, and this kind of act I will always remember. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. And is your son, you'd like to speak?
So, we were here...
Yeah, just your name again.
Yeah, my son, yeah, so basically, I'm Indir Dillon. I live at that same address with my parents.
Yes.
And we were here a couple meetings ago.
Yes.
And, you know, the sign was still being debated on, and the chief actually visited, the chief visited our house that week, and I think the decision was made, that was just conveyed yesterday, that they're gonna take the parking spot away. But it's, it's a major inconvenience for my parents because they actually used the pavement to get in and out of my car. So, the parking spot was taken, the sign was put in today. I don't mind parking away, but the problem is, my parents can't walk that far, and in winter time, during snow, they're not gonna make it. I mean, they're gonna probably, I'm worried. I mean, he's so frail, he hardly can get in the car.
Okay, but we're talking, right, but you came forward, you gave us the maps, the chief was here, chief, like, support, so we talked about it, because the council has dedicated that authority to the chief of police as far as the sightlines, we talked about it. So, what you're saying is, your father would rather park in the street and walk all the way to the, through the driveway, he doesn't want to go on his driveway, is that correct?
So, the issue, the driveway, even, he's actually using the pavement to get in and out of the car, and if I park in my driveway, it's very hard for him to get in and out because I have a 10-feet driveway and a 10-feet truck, he has to get in the lawn to get in and out of the car. It's, it's just a major inconvenience for...
So, he wants to park on the street and walk up through the driveway?
That's how he's been doing.
He doesn't want to park in the driveway?
No.
Okay, so hang on, let's, I'm sorry, sir?
It's possibly helpful to me, being, having a spinal injury, because it's very painful all over the body. When you are moved, it's not very easy now.
Okay, let's, let's see with the chief, because you had brought us the maps, and we went through it, so I do appreciate that. So, chief?
Good evening, Isa Shaheen, Chief of Police. So, I did, as you know, we were here maybe a couple meetings ago, Mr. Dillon came with some maps. This is an issue that's been studied by, well, first, we went to our traffic commission, and they evaluated and deferred to my decision. So, prior to me making a decision as it relates to the parking issue, I consulted with our traffic engineers. Our traffic engineers studied the issue and determined that the best placement for the signs were where I ultimately agreed to put them. I went and visited the site after the meeting, I spoke with a number of residents, there was just as many residents that would like to see the parking sign in one spot versus the one where I ultimately put the sign. You actually had residents that signed both petitions, I think they just want to be agreeable to someone at their front door asking them to sign a petition. This is the first time meeting Mr. Dillon's wonderful father, the issue of his condition and being able to park in the street was never really truly raised, it was more concerning just being able to park in front of his house. I will add, you have a driveway, Mr. Dillon, that's probably 120 feet long, that would be available to you to park, but I can appreciate your perspective that you need to use the street. At the end of the day, I ultimately made the decision to agree with the traffic engineers, right? I know what I know, and I know what I don't know, and that was their recommendation. There is a line of sight issue when you drive that street, it's hard to see around that corner, and I'd have concerns with oncoming traffic or pedestrians in the roadway. I've agreed to look at it and put it temporarily for six months, and then after six months, reevaluate it, speak with the residents, speak with Mr. Dillon, and if it's not working, or if it's problematic, or if it's actually increased the speeds to Councilman Hamud's issue, maybe having a car that might slow it down, then we can take the sign out and move it over. The one final thing I'll add, the cars that Mr. Dillon parks in the street are traditionally not passenger vehicles, they're commercial vehicles, they have US DOT numbers, there's been a car, I'm assuming from work, that was a stake truck, and on the face alone, that's not allowable. I think they're potentially vehicles that he uses for work. So, they're large vehicles that are taking up the roadway, it's not a Ford Fusion.
Okay, so, that's a different part, so, no, I guess, chief, we're gonna ask him that, but, I mean, those are not allowed on the street anyways?
Correct.
So, if they're commercial vehicles, but let's talk about the original, I know it's not in front of us today, but the original sightlines, and then you said you were looking at it, was there a change from the sightlines that you originally initiated?
No, the sightlines, I just wanted to go through...
It was like two car spots?
Yeah, well, I, it's one spot. The traffic engineer suggested that you move the sign further south, which would then prevent him from parking in front of his house, he'd have to park in front of the neighbor's house, which is about roughly eight or nine feet away.
Okay, so, basically, what was presented at that time is still the case?
Correct.
That you decided to uphold that line of sight because of the curve? I know the residents are not able to see what we saw, but it's the curve turning?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I didn't override the recommendation of the traffic engineers.
You upheld it?
I did not.
Yeah, you upheld it, so, I think, but you're also indicating that you're gonna look at it for six months, or is it...
Correct. I will take it that for many years, there hasn't been a sign, there haven't been issues, and so, let's, let's try it for six months, I'll set it myself in a reminder, and we'll reevaluate it.
Right, but we've always said, I mean, what problem were we trying to solve? If there's never been a problem, why are, why are we addressing it? So, I mean, that's...
Well, because there's been a, to your point, council president, there was a sign saying, "No parking beyond the sign."
There was.
Yeah, that's been there for many, many years. There just wasn't a sign to end it, right? Because at some point, it was taken out, so it had to go somewhere.
I understand. All right, so, Mr. Enner, do you understand that the police chief is recommending, based on the traffic engineering, that it should remain as the plat that you showed us at the time when you came? As far as your father and his condition, I mean, I know we have permit parking and stuff, but that's not gonna override the...
That'd be, yeah, it would be correct.
That would not override this?
No.
Okay. And as far as commercial stake trucks, and those are not allowed on the street, I'm sure you're aware of that, you've been a resident for many years, correct?
Yes, council member, so, just to be clear, I work for Ford, and once in a while, if I want to come around during afternoon or something and check a mail real quick, I'm in the middle of testing, I just park it, leave it running, go inside and come back. I have actually never parked, and I fully understand, I do not park any big vehicles up there anymore, you know? So, the pictures, my neighbor took those, and I think we're trying to combine two different things. And then, just, just for the record, I mean, the sign...
Yeah, I know, but, but one of the things is illegal, so we do have to combine them. I mean, the question is, if, if you have a truck, that's a commercial-based truck, cannot be parked in that, in that area, so, but you're saying that those are not your vehicles, they're not registered to you, those are ones that you bring home from Ford and testing?
That is correct, yes, council member.
Okay.
So, I mean, and I no longer do that anymore.
Okay.
So, you know, I mean, those pictures are old pictures that, that have been...
This is in the past, okay?
In the past, yes, and I fully understand it, and I won't do it again.
That's fine, yeah.
Another thing I want to, I want to mention is, there is a, there's a picture of where the sign was before.
Yeah, I think you showed us, we had a map.
And then, the petition that was signed by people, it only had five words on it, it said curb, reinstated curb parking, and I think maybe city over-calibrated their approach just so they can take my parking spot away.
The, I didn't understand that.
So, the petition, the original petition that was signed, that initiated all this after several years of living there, had five words on it, it said reinstated curb parking.
Right, I know, but, Ms. Enner, petitions are designed to give the bodies the opportunity to, to hear, it's one factor, it's not determinable, so, the petition just gives us an idea that people are, there's concern regarding, it doesn't mean, like, if it was framed improperly, it's not gonna be the factor that makes the issue. The issue is the chief of police is indicating that on that curb, because of that sightline, it's a hazard and people and kids can get hit. That's the concern, so I, I don't want you to think we dismiss the petitions, but they're, they're one factor, they're not determinable, so, I understand what you're saying, that you don't think the petition holds much weight. To me, what matters is the chief and the traffic engineers are saying there's a concern, and he's indicating he's gonna look at it again within six-month period of time.
Right, and there were two different designs, two different sketches for that curb. The first one actually took 20% of the parking spot away, and the second one took it entirely, right? And, and if you look at the drawings, both of, both those drawings don't have any city, I still couldn't figure out who made those drawings, and I've been trying to contact engineering, and...
Who made the drawings?
Yes, there is no initials, there's nothing on it, on the drawings, I mean, you can't...
Yeah, I, I don't know, I mean, I'm assuming our engineers did it, but any material that you liked, that the chief has, I mean, that's what he used for making his decision.
I'd be happy to provide you all the materials to take a look at it.
Yeah, we could provide you that, I don't think that's the issue, I think that it's not, and, and the traffic commission decided it was such an issue, I don't want to speak for them, but they did not make a decision, they asked the chief to make it because obviously it wasn't clear-cut. So, I'm not saying that you don't have a point, obviously, if a body like ours could not determine that you were, you know, for you or against you, or not sure, and asked the chief to look at it, it means that you do have, I mean, there is some concern that what you have to say is accurate, but at this time, you know...
The one thing I'd...
Go ahead, chief.
I did my due diligence, council. I looked at the evaluation evidence, I spoke with all the residents, I not, I only just, not only looked at the, the petition, but I talked with residents when I went out there, I walked the sidewalk, I walked the street, and I looked at it, so I didn't make this decision lightly, and I'd like to reevaluate in six months, and if it's not working, or it's not useful, then we'll take it and remove it.
Chenner, do you understand that?
Yes, I appreciate that, and that's what he was telling me. My dad just wanted to come here because he was having...
No, I appreciate him coming, I hope you're, hope you do well, but I could tell you what to do also, Jackie, I will have our staff calendar it for six months, and we have your information, so we'll make sure we get back with you too, and get with the chief, if we're all here in six months, and see what's, what's the status is, okay?
Yeah.
But before you leave, Councilman Paris?
Yes, I could.
Yes.
Council president.
Absolutely.
Thank you. I just wanted to ask a question, though, in the past, when you've gone down to that vehicle to get in, you've walked then from the house down the driveway?
It is my friend. I use the stick to walk when it's snow.
But from your home, all the way down the driveway to the curb of the street?
Yes, it's a slope, see? To walk on a snow is a difference to me. Otherwise, also, I have to take the full sport because imbalance in case of the spinal cord makes you fall straight away flat. Spinal injury is one injury that lives in your entire body.
Okay, but, but my, my question is, though, that you would normally then walk from the house to the curb of the street?
So, my submission is, I'm 86-years-old.
Right.
It's an unfair age, I would say, but if a little shift will make me live comfortably with my children, so does my wife, who is also handicapped.
If I could make a recommendation...
It is your judgment.
Yes, no, I appreciate it.
If it would be helpful, he could park in front of the house to load up his father or his family.
That's, that's exactly what I was going to get to, because there is a difference between no parking, no stopping, no standing, and that if you, if the son was able to go ahead to the curb, getting the vehicle prepared for his father to make it down to that curb and get in the vehicle, that is not parking.
Great idea.
So, that, I just bringing it up as something that kind of became obvious to me, that maybe it's a way of resolving the issue.
Thank you, Councilman Paris.
It has been there for years. This place has been there for years. I've been there 10 years, nobody thought of it or did it. So, if it all of a sudden happens, I'll just say, take a time, mercy for look at.
Okay.
So, make things, everything look fine for everybody.
Well, we do appreciate you coming, again, and we will make sure we contact you to see what the result was over the time, okay?
With respects to all of you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming forward.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Chief. All right, we have a few more cards. Um, I'd like to get through here. We have Robert J. Curtin. Sure? Yes, okay. Yeah. When they call your name, just come right up. No problem. Just state your name and address for the record.
Yeah, I think I started out here filling out my card, so.
Yes.
Um, I have complaint. My name's Robert Curtin. I live on Queen Street.
Yes.
3007.
Thank you.
Um, I had a neighbor. He's a great neighbor. He's left. He abandoned the home. Supposedly, it really never was his. He bought it on land contract and never finished the deal circa 1982, something like that. My complaint now is that the house is falling apart. Um, for the first, oh, he was gone, you know, in and out for a couple of years before it was abandoned. I cut the grass. And, you know, and I developed COVID also during that time. So it became a kind of a hardship for me to continue to do it. It was hard for me. I was still working. Short of breath. Anyways, long story short. Um, I've called the city numerous times since March, maybe February. And they send a gentleman in February, which I thought, I'm sorry, guys. I I may not be smart. But I think if you're going to come and look at the the status of a home, including the roof, you don't come with snow on it. And that's exactly what he did. And he goes, well, it looks fine. And I I had to do everything in my heart not to insult him because it was ridiculous. The roof is the roof, the shingles have been falling off for 20-plus years. The gutters in the back are in disarray. I am sure that there are varmints in that home. My neighbor who lives behind is a wonderful guy, and he has to deal with the mosquito issues in his backyard. And my complaint is that every time I call the city, they half-heartedly act like they're listening to me, kind of like right now.
We're trying to find out if the director's here, sir. And I I'm more than capable of doing two things at one time.
Okay.
You can ask.
All right. But again, you know, I want to be heard. So when I see when I see that, I feel like I'm not being okay. In all, in all.
You you are being heard, sir. I'm trying to find the director to get. I like to get resolve, so.
Well, it needs to be because I've complained about it. I've complained about it numerous.
Right.
And I'm really concerned about it because I'll be honest with you. I am a transplant here. I'm not from here. I probably will not stay in Dearborn that much longer. But I don't want to lose 50 grand on my house due to a home next door to me that is completely dilapidated now. And I know the guy that owns it or lived in it.
We have 30 seconds? Well, sir, yeah, sir, the the living in and the terminology of land contract is illegal is illegal ownership, for certain, you know.
But anyways.
So we'll we'll.
He wasn't able. He wasn't able to sell it due to that because he never signed.
Yeah, because you have to fulfill it. You can't sell something until you pay it off. So there's legal.
So my only.
I know, but to indicate that it's not owned is not correct.
All right, my only, okay. So we'll just abort all that. My question is, is the city going to at least address my complaint? Because they have not. And I'm going to leave this in when I sit down now and say, would this be addressed if it was in one of the nice mansions north of Michigan Avenue where people are paying astronomical taxes twice and three times higher than somebody in my neighborhood? So I'll leave it at that.
Well, sir, um, thank you, Mr. Court. So, sir, for the address you indicated, did you want to give us the address or you you good? Because we would need that.
Of the home?
Yeah, I mean, the reason why you came in.
I put it on the card, but.
Oh, it says it says 3007.
Did it not say the house next door? Okay, 2975 Queen.
Sir, do you live on the corner?
No.
Okay, so that means there's a house on either side of you?
Yes.
Okay.
You'll you'll see it. It's it's.
Okay, I know. We just, if you like us to get a resolve, we would need the address. So what was it, sir?
You need what?
The address of the property.
2975 Queen.
2975. Okay.
Numerous times I've given the city um access to my yard, numerous.
No, no, I I appreciate that. So I what I can tell you, sir, is you're here before the council for the first time. We will we have the ability to, our economic director is not here, but the deputy's here. So we're going to put it on the log and we'll make sure that we send out an inspector regarding what you indicated. The grass, the roof and the gutters. That's what I had.
Okay, can I ask one other thing?
Yeah, like, but come forward.
Can I give you my phone number?
But come come forward, sir. So I I don't want to scream your number out on here, but I'm going to have our assistant. It says on here your number. I want to make sure it's accurate.
Yeah, it is accurate.
Well, I I have a hard time.
623-2838.
Okay, what is it?
I don't really care if anybody calls me. 623-2838. I'm not getting calls, so that's what bothers me.
Okay. No, 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 that's fair. The last few numbers wrong, but I got it now.
Okay. They they can feel free to call me. I will be there and I'll meet them right in my yard.
Okay.
I'm I'm doing all that. They can come tomorrow. They can come Thursday.
All right, we'll just, we will make sure we get them out there. I promise you. Thank you, sir. All right, Jackie, log this for a thing. Okay. Thank you very much.
Council President, would you like to extend the time?
Yeah, so at this time, I I we do have a few more um cards, approximately five, on the purpose of making sure that everyone is heard. Even though we eliminate, we had 30 minutes, uh, we also have a a very short agenda, so I'd like to get through the people to allow them to speak. Do I have a motion to suspend the rules? Motion made by Councilman uh, you know, supported by Councilwoman Herrick. Any objection to unanimous rule? Okay, unanimous rule should be attached. Thank you, Mr. Court. We will continue. Um, we have Mr. Neri here.
Good evening, Council. My name is Najee Almodjedja. I'm Prospect.
Okay.
So I really don't have anything prepared. I wasn't going to say anything, but uh, a few of the comments beforehand kind of compelled me to come up and speak.
Yep.
So, you know, throughout life, uh, when you have a lot of stress or you have things going on, things are hectic. I always like to start at the big picture, look at a high level. And um, we live oddly enough, on a giant rock that goes around the sun. We have uh one star in our Milky Way galaxy out of 300, 400 billion stars. And then in this Milky Way galaxy is one galaxy out of the most recent study, we have 2 trillion galaxies. And yet, everything that we experience, everything in life is on this little tiny planet. And so ultimately, you and I and every human being that has ever lived or will ever live is a creation, in my humble opinion, of God Almighty. And it is God Almighty who put us on this earth. And we did not get to decide whether we're we're male or female, whether we're tall or short, whether we're black or white. And so we're blessed to live in the United States of America. Where we come from, many, many different backgrounds. Some of us were born in the Middle East. Some of us came from Italy. Some of us came from Poland. But at the end of the day, we're all Americans and we have the fundamental right as Americans of freedom of speech and freedom of religion. And I respect everybody's opinion. Now, everybody knows how I felt about what the mayor did last month. I made that very clear. And I tried to advise him. I know he doesn't take my calls. That's okay. I know he's very busy. I tried to advise him to issue an apology to reduce the temperature that is going on in the United States. Obviously, he did not take uh, that advice and decided to go a different route. Ultimately, as human beings and as Americans, we hold fast and true to the principle of fairness and being just. So as I was being fair and just in criticizing him, I have to also criticize some of the my fellow Americans that came here earlier and spoke some very inflammatory language. That's not going to help the situations. Whether we're Muslim, whether we're Christian, whether we're Arab, whether we're non-Arab, it doesn't matter. Everybody is welcome in Dearborn. And at the end of the day, we need to treat each other with respect, humility and civility. Even if I disagree with you, you disagree with me.
You have 30 seconds?
Thank you. It doesn't mean I hate you or you hate me. We have a disagreement. That is okay. And at the end of the day, ultimately, this, not only Dearborn, but every city in the United States, at the end of the day, it is an American city. We come from all walks of life as uh is written in our um, in our monetary system. E pluribus unum, out of many, one. And I hope we can come together based on common sense and understanding. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you. All right, uh, next we have Nancy Krieger. Close to the. Councilman.
My name's Nancy Krieger and I live at One Ashby Lane in Dearborn. On September 23rd, at the council meeting, the mayor said Dearborn embodies the best of America by bringing together people of all backgrounds, religions and beliefs to live in peace and mutual respect as neighbors and colleagues. As a Dearborn resident, I totally agree. My concern is the racial, ethnic, sexual orientation harassment and intimidation in the schools. I'm hard put to find any proactive program in place for any type of social awareness or any anti-harassment educational program. The only proactive program I could find was the Language Matters Program started at Edsel Ford High School in 2024. And the principal, Rima Hassan, met with a student advisory group. The program was developed to address the misuse of derogatory terms among students. Its purpose is to educate students about the harmful impact of slurs and other derogatory language. The key is student involvement for them to help initiate and make po- and make policy. This should be a district-wide program. Many young students are using hateful, hurtful, derogatory words and slurs that they've heard, but many times they have no idea what they mean or what they're saying. We have an opportunity to rectify this situation, starting with a new superintendent. As council members and mayor, you can have an impact on who we want running our schools. We can't have an atmosphere of harassment, hatred and bullying in our schools and then expect to become a unified, respectful, diverse community of adults. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. All right, uh, next we have Sammy Alhadi. And just a kind reminder, uh, political uh paraphernalia and stuff is not allowed in the council chambers. And then anybody speaking here regarding theirself as a uh resident is, uh, just keep in mind it's a resident that is speaking, not any uh, aspect regarding political campaigning. Thank you. Sir, go ahead.
Good evening, Council.
Just your name.
My name is Sammy Alhadi. And I live on 5034 Argyle Street. As a resident of the city, I've lived here for over 26 years. I'm concerned and very alarmed as the way our elections are being handled. As you all know, the clerk's office sent out faulty absentee ballots. These ballots had a name of a candidate who withdrew his name months and months before. Even though that took place, the clerk proofed the ballot and sent it out to print. This is going to cost the city thousands and thousands of dollars and put our elections at the risk of legal jeopardy. As a resident, I don't want to be paying thousands of dollars for the mistake the clerk did. And I don't think any other resident would like to pay that either. What is our city council doing about resolving this issue and holding our city clerk accountable? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Hadi, thank you for that question. Um, so our committee, the whole meeting, the council spoke regarding the integrity of the ballots. Uh, things happen, uh, you know, as far as whether proofing or not proofing. I look for, as I told the gentleman before, action and actually getting resolved. So um, I think our legal department answered um, on Thursday. They sent out an email recently. So my concern uh, was that the ballots have to be hand transferred. As far as what the council can do for the clerk, the clerk is an independent body elected by the people. So uh, even though the charter indicates that they, he is the record keeper of the council, uh, what we have to do is oversight for us is limited. For example, I requested and was my colleagues supported to have an oversight committee instituted that was appointed by the council to oversee the balance transfers. Because what some residents may or may not be aware of is if you do not return the second correct ballot by 8 o'clock at the then the close. And Mr. Clerk, if if I misspeak, please just speak up and let me know. That ballot has to be hand transferred into the correct ballot and spread through the machine. So um, I would like to defer to, because you asked what the council's doing, I want to make sure that the residents know. Um, I I did speak with the clerk. Uh, the clerk did contact every uh, one of the members of the council as well. As long as, as well as the mayor had contacted us regarding the ballots being in error. There is 9,000 ballots that were sent out in error. So on Thursday, our first meeting, I suggested and was supported by unanimously by the council, my colleagues to create this committee. Uh, unfortunately, from my understanding, uh, from the legal department is we cannot do that. They have to be certified by the state election committee. They have to take courses and classes. Um, so there's no oversight that the council can do. Unfortunately, the elections is a separate, and they do have oversight. It is oversighted by the state secretary of state and by the state of Michigan. Mr. Mr. Clerk, is that correct as far as the oversight? Just oversight?
Yes, that is correct.
So the council was concerned about hand transferring ballots. I mean, it's a concern uh, to take a ballot and transfer it. And so we wanted to make sure. Uh, unfortunately, uh, and Mr. Mr. Romer for the city, uh, as the council for the city attorney, I know if you could just turn on, is there anything that you'd like to add regarding the the council's request? Yeah, I don't. Did you request there? Yep, thank God, legal, okay. Hang on one second, I have to. Okay, did it go on?
No.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm loud. I can just talk.
Well, one second. There you go. Try now. We had to shut somebody off. Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. Okay, go ahead.
Uh, so my my comment related to the the committee inquiry that was referred to my department for review, what I, how I'll answer it is I'll say that I provided a review uh, in an opinion to the council. And given the council's current rules, I'm not going to speak to what that opinion was. Uh, but that referral came to me. It was reviewed um, Friday through the weekend, uh, and I provided opinion to the council on the matter.
Okay, and that that immediately, that's not a confidential report, is it?
I I viewed that response as a attorney-client um, opinion on the matter.
Okay, I was unaware of that. I didn't request it that way, but I I could see how you can uh, see it that way. So the bottom line is, Mr. Alhadi, is that the the council elected to by the residents does not have, and I can say that very clearly, does not have the authority to do what what I asked for, is to appoint independent people to oversee with my colleagues' suggestions and appointment power to oversee only and specifically the transfer of handwritten ballots onto another handwritten document and s- and send into the machine. So hopefully people get the second ballot and turn in the second ballot because there's a big sticker on it and it says second ballot. So hopefully that would alleviate that. But unfortunately, uh, there is no other oversight that the council can provide.
Has the clerk ever provided a five Y as to how this took place?
Well, um, the clerk, you would have to, I mean, the clerk, you would have to ask him himself. We did ask him. I asked him the exact questions on exactly how it happened, and it was a proofing error as you indicated. So that's that's my understanding.
Okay. And how much will this cost the city?
The 9,000 ballots, I'm not sure, uh, but you can put that request into our council and we can find out because we have to reissue 9,000 ballots. So it's it's a mailing of 9,000 ballots. So the good thing is it was caught really early. Uh, so uh, it's not affecting any early voting. It's not changing anything else. The election, it was the original 9,000, so.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Council.
My pleasure.
Can I respond to the previous comment?
Regarding?
The school superintendent?
Yeah, absolutely. So um, Councilwoman Herrick wants to address the schooling, the request about the schooling uh, our superintendent regarding, yeah, Nancy Krieger's comment. So we're just going to have her. She's just going to respond to her question. Please, Councilman.
Um, thank you. I I just didn't respond immediately because I was looking something up that I had just uh, looked at. Um, just to be clear, the superintendent and how the schools are managed in their budget is a separate entity than the city of Dearborn and and it's not related to the city council. Um, however, um, the resident who came forward to talk about that and anti-bullying um, is correct. Uh, we, as all citizens of Dearborn, have some influence on what the school board does in appointing a new school um, superintendent. And so I encourage folks to go to the school board meetings to express their thoughts on on how um, who might be selected as a superintendent, what the process might be and the things that, as residents, we'd like to see in our next superintendent. Um, regarding bullying, um, anyone can sign up for a document, uh, an e-newsletter that the school district sends out called The First Bell. Uh, I happen to work for the school district when it was first introduced about 10 years ago. And um, so it's a it's a newsletter that has a lot of interesting things about, you know, the operations of the schools. Each year, the Dearborn Public Schools has a um, special activities um, focused on anti-bullying. Um, it's that is meant to bring people together in the school district. Throughout the year, they have various programs. Different schools have different programs. Peer mentoring, um, counseling, um, things like that within the schools. But this particular week, Care to the Core, just happens to be coming up next week. So I just wanted to share this because it really is a focus on how um students and teachers and families can work together to uh, address bullying and try to prevent bullying. Um, so it's called Care to the Core. Thursday, October 16th, um, is the kickoff. The theme this year is Expect Respect. And this annual event, I'm reading from the newsletter, this annual event allows schools to showcase different tools they use to reduce bullying, improve school climate and culture, and strengthen social emotional learning for students. The district will kick off the day with a live broadcast featuring different programs and building excitement. The broadcast will start at 8:30 a.m. and be shown live or on demand on the Dearborn Public Schools YouTube channel. Um, so it just, it's meant to be kind of a snapshot of some of the things that they're doing in the schools to combat bullying.
Thank you. All right, next we have Ahtman Alansi.
Good evening. I just wanted to share something from the heart.
Just your name, name and address.
Oh, my name, Ahtman Ali Alansi. Over the past several months, I've had the opportunity to visit many of our city places of worship from churches to mosques to community gatherings. And what I've witnessed in each of these spaces is something truly beautiful. People who care about. People who care about one another, who pray for peace, and who want to see Dearborn continue to grow together. That's the Dearborn I know, one bit on respect, faith, and shared values. Hearing some of the comments tonight was disappointing because they don't reflect the reality I see every day. We are a city of neighbors, not strangers. I believe unity isn't just a slogan. It's something that we live through empathy, kindness, and listening to one another, even when we come from different walks of life. At the end of the day, we all want the same things: safe streets, strong families, and a hopeful future for our children. Thank you for letting me say that.
You got it. Thank you for coming forward. Appreciate that. All right, we have one last card, and then we are going to move on to our agenda. Mr. Robert Hattis.
Good evening, everyone. Robert Hattis, Fortson class of 1968. Uh-oh, one of the best years. Actually, I wouldn't have come up here to speak today. I just wanted to address one or two issues. I listened to a couple of the earlier speakers that spoke in the beginning and so forth, and there's not ample time to address those concerns. Anybody who wants to see what my views are with respect to what the mayor said, they can take a look at the September 23rd meeting, the last meeting and so forth, and I expressed my opinion there. I could go on and on with respect to that, but I've lived in Dearborn, God, I've known every mayor, I've talked with every mayor since I've been born. Mayor Hubbard, I go to O'Reilly, Jack O'Reilly, the son, Guido, everyone that's been here I've talked to. Probably not to the present mayor, okay? But I judge this man basically on what he's done, and having experienced and communicated with prior mayors, I can say that this man, based on the things that he's done and so forth, not for one slip that people interpret as being, telling people to leave the city and so forth, I put that in a different context, and I believe that's the context he meant, not to tell someone, "You're not invited into the city of Dearborn." But when I yelled "fire" at the last thing, we don't want anyone coming in here and yelling "fire" and creating all type of rhetoric that's going to disrupt people and so forth. And again, because time won't allow, I will go on and say a couple of things, and I'll try and make it real quick. Regardless of race, ethnicity, et cetera, et cetera, unless we all come together as human beings someday, and God willing, we're in that transition stage where that happens, where people do come together and so forth, that's when humanity, hopefully, hopefully will have a chance to survive. And since the last meeting, I'm sure you all looked to see what was going on. We had our president speak before generals and admirals and so forth. Some of the rhetoric that he put out there, that's something that people should be real concerned about because regardless of your party affiliation, if, you may not have that right to come up here and speak as you do. This man may dictate what, what happens at the election box and so forth. 30 seconds left? Okay, I'll be, I'll be quick. What I, I think the Legal Women Voters supported the last King, No Kings Rally. I think they had one in Dearborn. I know we had one in Livonia and so forth. I would encourage everyone that really wants to work together to get out to this No Kings Rally all over the country and maybe double or triple the numbers that they saw the last time. Otherwise, you may not have an opportunity to come into certain forums and speak your mind without fear of some type of retribution. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hattis. Okay, we have one last card. I'd like to get through this since it was added late. Mr. Anthony Deegan.
Thank you very much for fitting me in. Anthony Deegan, longtime Dearborn resident. I wasn't sure if I was going to come up and speak, just kind of also listening to the things that are being said. I think that obviously, we all want peace for one another, we all want to respect one another, we want the city to be for one, you know, for everybody, and I think that it's easy to look at that unity that exists, when it does exist, but I think it's easy to also overlook the problems that are here when they do exist. And so, even, I mean, it is October 7th, the anniversary of that horrible massacre, and I'm thinking, I wasn't necessarily going to bring this up, but just hearing about the unity, I think like, nobody talks about the Jewish community and the things that have been said in this city regarding the Jewish community. I know many Jews personally. I know many people, atheists, Muslims, Hindus, but I know Jews who fear coming into this city. And we've had open protests on the street that the chief of police refuses to shut down. I've talked to him about it. He said it's a good, he did. I asked him, Council President Serini, he said it's a good thing that I'm not the chief of police. I asked him why that is permitted to happen, but people are saying things like, "From the river to the sea, Palestine will be free." And we know, that we know that this is a threat of genocide. It is not just about repatriation, it's for Jews in Israel, if they don't leave, they will literally be driven from the Jordan River to the Mediterranean Sea in a genocidal way. And this type of rhetoric happens throughout the city. It is not the majority, and so, it's easy to say, "All right, well, it's not the majority," but it is a sizable minority. And when that sizable minority comes into this place and asks for audience with this council and with the mayor for things like divestment from Israel, the mayor does not call them antisemites, or Jew haters, or racists, or bigots. Instead, he, he looks at them with a kind eye and with a soft heart. And so, we learn a lot of things about omission and commission. When somebody is, is not denouncing Hamas, which I asked you all to do and you refuse to do, when somebody is asked to denounce Hezbollah, which I asked you all to do and you refuse to do, when nobody, when nobody says by name that October 7th was bad, it's just a general thing of all violence is bad, but whenever it's the other side, it's Israel's bad. Let's divest from Israel. What the genocide is happening.
You have 30 seconds?
And so, when we talk about, it seems very one-sided, and even in this very place, there was the term, there are no such, there's no such thing as two forms of justice. And I would say that we keep that in mind, that it can't just be one way. And so, I would ask again that the city council and whoever is in place of the mayor, take this time to denounce Hamas and to denounce Hezbollah by name. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so at this time, we are going to close the public comment. We went over by about double the time, but I thought it was warranted. We will now go on to our next agenda item. Mr. Clerk, can I have the next agenda item?
Item 8 is a resolution in need of offer and support approving all the items of the consent agenda.
Offered by Councilwoman Herrick, supported by Councilman Al-Swafi. Just a quick reminder on this item, if there is there any, before we move forward with the vote, is there any consent agenda item that anyone, any single member would like to remove or wish to discuss individually on this agenda? No? All right, Mr. Clerk, can we have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Enos. Councilmember Hamud.
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham.
Yes.
Councilmember Paris.
Yes.
Councilmember Al-Swafi.
Yes.
Councilmember Herrick.
Yes.
Council President Serini.
Yes.
Six days, the resolution passes.
All right, Mr. Clerk, can we go to the next item?
Next item will now be item number 16, resolution by councilmembers Enos and Al-Swafi approving the minutes of the previous special closed meeting on September 23rd, 2025.
All right, are there any additions, deletions, or modifications to these minutes? Any objection to unanimous roll? Council President?
Yes.
Mr. Clerk?
Enos stepped out. I will take his offer.
All right, Mr. Clerk, we'll substitute Councilman Enos for Councilman Abraham. Thank you, Councilman Abraham.
Okay.
Unanimous roll, shall be attached. Next item.
Item number 17, resolution by councilmembers Paris and Abraham approving the minutes of the previous regimen meeting of September 23rd, 2025.
Okay, are there any additions, deletions, or modifications to these minutes? Any objection to unanimous roll? Unanimous roll shall be attached. Next item.
Item number 18, ordinance number 25-1816, introduced by councilmember Abraham. Synopsis and ordinance to amend the water and sewers chapter, Chapter 19 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Dearborn by amending Article 1 entitled "Exemption of Sewer Disposal Charge." Resolution by councilmembers Enos and Paris to table the ordinance.
All right, thank you, Mr. Clerk. The city's exemption of sewer disposal charge ordinance, section 19-31, was adopted in June 1985. It currently allows residents to, residents and businesses to request an exemption from sewer disposal charges if they can show and demonstrate that the water delivered to the property through the meter line did not enter our sanitary storm system. Elimination of this ordinance means that the residents and businesses will no longer have this exemption and the sewer disposal charge under the section. This is the first of two readings. You're to speak on this item, sir?
Yes.
Okay, yeah. Would you like to step forward, sir? And you could, either one, sir, and just state your name and address for the record.
My name is Jerry Rimmer. I live at 702 South Military, Dearborn 48124. My question is, on this ordinance, what is the rationale behind removing this, this section of it?
Okay, we, this came from, I believe, Legal, or is it through our DPW? I could tell you from my understanding, because we did have a lot of discussions, but whose item is it that brought it forward?
DPW.
DPW, okay. So, I'll give you our conversations that we had, sir, on Thursday on our committee of the whole, and my conversations with the legal department in the past regarding it. The issue is, is this is a methodology of calculating water rates. So, there is cities, because I've argued this for years, and we were able to get a good resolve, I believe, on this council that's been passed for the last three years. There's cities such as Warren and so on, where they say, "We're charging you the water based on usage, 95% and 5% on sewer." So, they have the ability to change it. It's a calculation and a formula. So, our city has been very consistent between water and sewer, trying to have a balance just for our calculations. So, whatever we pay Great Lakes Authority, we have to then collect from our residents. So, what's happening here is that we're eliminating this exemption where some people could say, "I have a separate meter that's metered for my sprinkler, and the sprinkler water did not run down the driveway into the drain, and therefore, it should not be counted." And from my understanding, and I don't know if Legal on Thursday indicated, there hasn't been one exemption granted since 85. So, we're trying to clean up the books and get it the right way. But let me see Director Hawkins if he has anything to add.
Sure.
I'm, Tim Hawkins, DPW director. I'm not sure of the exemptions that were done in the past. We've been pulling the record on that, and I will submit all those records to council as far as exemptions that were made. Some of them were CSOs. Once upon a time, when we built the CSOs, we used to use water to clean the filters off on those. We no longer do that. Our main concern that I looked into were like the golf courses. I worried that, you know, this exemption was covered by the golf courses. They get water from the Rouge River. They have pump houses. So, Severstall Steel once had an exemption, they no longer have it. So, it is minimal. I believe it's eight residential homes in Dearborn Heights that have it, and a few communities that use it for watering lawns. But the problem with that is, to say there's zero runoff to the storm system or the sanitary system is almost impossible to prove. We pay per unit of water to purify that as well, so we pay to get treated water brought in, and anything that runs down those drains, I pay. There's monitors on those drains, and then I pay per unit of water. So, regardless, that water will eventually run to the sewer. It does not just stay in the lawn, and especially in case where sprinkler heads break. I have somebody right now that had a water main break in a complex, and they're saying they didn't pay a unit of water because it ran to the Rouge River. Again, did it? Because the rest of the residents shouldn't have to pay for you running water out to the sewer.
All right. So, sir, did that help give you a little context, and did you have some more questions?
It gave me some perspective, basically, on how you have to monitor that, and I can understand that. Our, our situation is such that I represent Garrison Hill condo association on South Military. Directly behind us is the Rouge River. The incident that you spoke of, sprinkler system, we worked very hard to make sure that that system does not drain into the sewers, to the point that at 6:00 a.m. when they come on, I'm out there, and I have yet to see pools of water go down our drive into that. And I understand what you're saying. The Rouge River is part of what the water supply that has to be dealt with, and it is impossible to calculate how much went in and how much doesn't go in. Is there any kind of resolution that would give a community like ours, 11 homes, some kind of wastewater or gray water relief if the system is not being used 50% of the time, 80% of the time? Is there any calculation that's even being considered, or is it just simply, "Let's close the door on this and administratively get our books together?" And I can even understand that. But at this particular point, we've been trying since 2022 to be recognized as qualifying for this. When we finally get a chance to have, for me to speak to this, it's now about to be removed. So, you can see my frustration just a little bit, although I am willing to listen to an argument or a proposal that I can take back to our condo association and argue, short of having you come in.
Right. So, I think at this point, I mean, the director will be more than free to answer you the question. For the council, this is being brought forward. You said you applied in 2020?
2022. Our treasurer wrote a letter saying that he thought we qualified for this function.
Yeah.
We have yet to hear back from that. It is only through councilmember Al-Swafi that I'm even here. It just was luck that I found out about this, and we discussed it, and he thought it might be a good idea to come and speak to this. More so, it's just that three years is a long time to wait for a yes or no, and that's all we were looking for, is a yes or no. Do we qualify? Is this legit or not?
Yeah, I don't know where that, you know, Jackie, we'll have to get him a result. I don't know where your letter went to, because in my opinion, Mr. Romer, this is a legal question. The burden of proof is on the resident to prove what millimeter, what part of water has not been received. So, and we can't give you legal advice, but Mr. Romer, is your mic on?
Thank you. So, that, that would be the response I would give. There should have been a response given, I don't know if there wasn't, but there should have been, but the owner is not on the city. You don't just request, "Do we fall under this exemption?" You're supposed to demonstrate you meet the exemption. So, just messaging the water department on behalf of the association saying, "We believe we qualify," is not going to meet the current code requirement.
I understand. We had the director of the water department, I believe his name is James Futh, come out and look at the plumbing. We never got a response back. His assistant, Marcus, came out, looked at the plumbing, took photos, still didn't hear anything back. So, it's a two-part issue. We thought we were following the rules in place. The letter was sent to the head of the water department. If it was not supposed to go there, we would have liked to respond to say, "We don't handle this, address this letter here." When I appeared in council offices to talk to the secretaries, and I'm not even sure that they're secretaries, your associates, they knew nothing about this and told me that it was during a period of flux when the then head of the department was retiring, and maybe it got lost in the shuffle. I can even understand that. We just wanted a response. Now that it's brought to your attention, and to hear that it's being debated about eliminating, we would have liked to have been on board this ship in 2022.
Well, I will tell you, the timeline seems off if the person was retiring. It sounds like you were communicating with Jim Murray or Eric Witty.
I believe that's, I don't have the letter in front of me, but I sent it to a council member, and it's been distributed.
Well, so, that was the prior DPW director, not Director Hawkins, who is before you, so...
That was more than four years ago.
We don't know what happened to that. I mean, I won't speak for Tim, but I don't know anything about that letter. All I'm communicating to you is that code requirement requires you to maintain the burden. You can't just push it to the city, have them come out and do all of the work to meet your burden. The association needs to take ownership of meeting the burden, showing it's not going into the city sewer.
We thought we did. As we understood the burden, which was to supply proof, which was to supply photos of what this plumbing line was, it was our understanding that we meant that. Where the lightning hits the stump, so to speak, is no response back. If I'm not giving you what you need and you're not telling me you need more, you can see my frustration. I would gladly do what you needed to do if I knew what it was.
Right, but I think, sir, the issue is, is that the city cannot give you advice on what it is. There's an ordinance, you have, your organization should have somebody that represents you guys to look into that aspect. But as far as looking at the plumbing aspect, and you're saying, the plumbing is the, is the water coming in, correct?
Yes.
Okay, you do know this is about the water going out?
Yes.
All right, so you see, my, my confusion is that we're looking at water coming in...
The water coming in is what's supplied.
That's correct.
Our debate is on the fee for waste disposal.
Correct.
Which is that water going out.
Right, right.
So, they're kind of tied together.
Well, I know, but I apologize. We have one other council member waiting, but you're right, but the water coming in is, has metered, and that there's, there's a, there's a, you know, it's subj, it's right there, subj, it's right there, subjective aspect. You can see the meter, and you can get the number. So, we have a couple of council members. We'll let them respond. And all I can tell you, sir, is, is that, as the lawyer indicated to you for the city, you would have to understand why, but I, I want you to, to understand, know our aspect too. In the twelve years I've been here, there was one man, a business, that proved without a shadow of a doubt that their water that they use for work was burned off and not entered, and then we entered an agreement with them. So, that, that's the issue, and I know you're looking for some type of resolve, but you have to prove the measurement, and so far you haven't been able to come up with what is going in and what's not. So, that, that's why we're trying to clear this off the books so that it's not a confusion. Because let's say everybody wanted to do that, then what we would have to do is adjust our rates, because we have to still pay for the water and sewer system. So, you sure? All right, Councilman Abraham.
Just curious, how many, how many meters are in the complex?
How many meters are in the complex? Eleven for each, each individual condo.
Each condo has one meter, and then do you have a meter for the common space?
There is a meter. Yes, there are two sets. There is a meter for this common space that comes in. It's in a unit, and then there's the units meter.
So, you have more than eleven?
That would make it twelve then, this meter for the sprinkler.
Okay, thank you.
So, sir, what I recommend, I, Councilman Elswoff, he showed me the letter dated for in 2022.
Yes.
That director was no longer employed here at that time. So, what I, what I recommend you to do, because we cannot give you legal advice and so on and so forth, is, is you'd have to look into if there is a measurement that you can prove, and then that's what you would have to file on this exemption. This is the first reading, but I, unless I hear from anyone else, my understanding that there was very, very few, if any, I'm saying, my tenure, there was one business that manufactures using water, and, and there is no disposal because it's part of a steelmaking process. So, and I, I know about that because I was involved in it. And it was legal, legal litigation, which means the party, the petitioner, had to bring litigation towards the city, and then we had to negotiate with them. So, I'm not saying that you have to sue, but we have to find out, yeah.
No, no, we are not interested in suing the city.
I understand, I understand, but I think we're trying to find a resolve for you, but...
I think the answer that you supplied, which is basically, there is no way of measuring that. So, just tell me that there's a process, and scientifically, there's not a process for delineating how much water goes in the sewer and how much goes into the Rouge. So, we're kind of between a rock and a hard place.
Right.
But I can take this back to our governing body and say...
Yep, absolutely, and then the director will speak to you after, if you like.
Sure.
Maybe he, you know, has time to come to the body, if you like, to speak regarding it too. But you're right, it is very, it's a very challenging burden.
From what he just described.
Yeah, I mean...
It's almost...
Impossible.
Yeah, I don't want to say that yet, but...
No, no, almost, almost, it's true. I mean, I'm sure there's some scientific method that might cost more, like anything else, right? We can build a car that will run and last forever, but that wouldn't be good for, for me or other people, so we wouldn't want that.
No, for the rest of the supply.
All right, so...
Anyway, thank you for...
So, we have to look at the cost burden, so you're right.
Thank you for the...
But thank you so much for coming forward, and Director Hawkins will give you his...
That'd be great.
All right, thank you.
That'd be fantastic. Thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments on this item? Director, you're also, thank you. All right, Mr. Clerk, can we have the first reading?
This is the first reading of ordinance number 25-1860, an ordinance to amend the Water and Sewers Chapter, Chapter 19 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Dearborn, by amending Article One entitled Exemption of Sewer, Sewage Disposal Charge.
All right, thank you, Mr. Clerk. Next item.
Item number nineteen, resolution by council members Hamud and Enos, awarding a contract to Premier Group Associates in the amount not to exceed $130,000 for the design, build, and transformation of the West Dearborn Pocket Park located at 22054 Michigan Avenue, and requesting immediate effect.
All right, thank you, Mr. Clerk. The West Downtown Development Authority, or WDDDA, recognizes as the West Dearborn Pocket Park to, is underutilized and has many outdated features, including pavers, landscape, art, and faun, and a decorative mural as well. So, the WDDA is seeking to transform this park into a functional and aesthetically pleasing and environmentally sustaining our community gathering space that enhances our downtown. It is requesting that the council authorize and approve the contract with Premier Group Associates for the transformation of the peace park, of the Pocket Park located at 22054 Michigan Avenue. The company was selected through a request for proposal process conducted by the city with the help of the West Dearborn Downtown Authority. The total project will not exceed $130,000 and expected to be completed by the end of 2025 with immediate effect as being requested. Any questions or comments on this item? Councilman Herrick.
Um, thank you, Council President. I actually have two, so if we have somebody that could possibly address my questions. Well, one, one's a question, one's just a comment. When we talked about this on Thursday, I just wanted to let the public know that this Pocket Park, there are a couple of features there, as was mentioned, sculptures and a mural on the wall alongside the park. The mural is one of the things that's going to be given the attention it deserves to preserve it, and the other is, there's a bench there that was designed by high school students in one of our early pockets of perception student design team groups that is managed by the Dearborn Community Fund. And so, it's a beautiful aluminum sculpture, and so I was assured that it would be preserved and have a home in the park, so thank you for that, and I'm sure the students will be grateful as well, knowing that their work will still be on display all these years later. I want to just touch on what that sculpture is, in light of the conversations that we've been having. Students sometimes are our own guiding light, and in this case, the bench that's there is part of a two-piece pair. The other half of the pair of sculptures is in East Dearborn in front of Old City Hall in our East Dearborn Peace Park, and it's appropriate that it be there because it is a demonstration of the, the message of peace and unity, and people to live, living together, coexisting in harmony here in Dearborn. And the students did this, I think it was around 2012, that that sculpture was built. So, the top part, which is the arch, is in East Dearborn, and then the bench that exists with it is in West Dearborn in the Pocket Park there. And so, the students' message was that we live harmoniously here in Dearborn, and they were exhibiting that through art. So, I wanted to give a shout out to the students and their vision in doing that. And then, secondly, I just had a quick question. On behalf of Rotary Club of Dearborn, and I'm the president of Rotary Club of Dearborn right now, so it, it just worked out well that I could ask this question. Two years ago, Rotary donated a Little Free Library, and it was installed in the Pocket Park there, and then just this year, it was renovated because it had become dilapidated, and just like our homes, needed some work. So, the new Little Free Library was installed earlier this year, and so the Rotarians are hoping that it will still have a home in the park, and asked me to ask about it.
Hi, Laura Sanchez, Economic Development. Uh, yes, the Little Free Library will definitely stay on the park. It might be temporarily removed while we, you know, do some paver installations or whatnot. We'll happily replace it in the same place that it was before.
Okay, thank you so much. They'll be happy to hear that.
Great, thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments? Okay, any objection to unanimous roll? Unanimous roll shall be attached. Next item.
Item twenty, resolution by council members Abraham and Herrick, awarding a sole-source contract to Amigo and Amigo Art Studio in the amount of $88,650 for two winter art installations as part of Dearborn's Wonder, Wonderlights Holiday Event, and requesting immediate effect.
All right, thank you, Mr. Clerk. Dearborn's Wonderlights is a new city event and will be featuring interactive installations that blend technology, art, and storytelling to create a memorable holiday walkthrough experience. This is a free, family-friendly occasion that will debut in our Peace Park West and is designated to attract thousands of attendees from across metro Detroit as, as a regional centerpiece for holiday celebrations. Each month of Wonderlights experience will be anchored by a community event kicking off an opening ceremony. There we go, we got a picture right of it on the screen there. And it will begin on Thursday, November twentieth, 2025. This installation will provide an accessibility of high-quality holiday and cultural experience for residents and visitors of all ages. This project is expected to generate increased foot traffic to our downtown businesses, strengthening civic and community pride, and establish Dearborn as a regional destination for winter arts and holiday program. This request by the Department of Communications in conjunction with purchasing is recommending a sole-source purchase contract with Amigo and Amigo for two winter art installations. The requested amount is $88,650 with immediate effect as being requested. Any questions or comments? Any objection to unanimous roll? Okay, unanimous roll shall be attached. Next item.
Item twenty-one, resolution by council members Paris and Herrick, granting the request of UAW Local 600 to host its annual trunk or treat event in the parking lot located at 10550 Dix on Saturday, October twenty-five, 2025, from 3:00 PM until 8:00 PM, with assistance from the Police Department for road closures of Fernie Dix and Fernie Werner, also authorizing a noise waiver for the duration of the event and requesting immediate effect.
All right, the annual UAW trunk or treat event will be coming to our corners, becoming a cornerstone in both our city and most normally in the South End community. The UAW Local 600 of Dearborn requests an approval to host this annual event, trunk or treat, event on Saturday, October twenty-fifth, 2025, from 3:00 PM to 8:00 PM for safety and all attendees. They're requesting authorization for the road closures in the intersection of Fernie and Dix and Fernie and, uh, God, for noy? Werner, I'm sorry. Werner, yeah, for the duration of the event, should I note, South End, in the South End of Dearborn. The Wayne County will provide a separate permit for these road closures on the other side. Additionally, they're requesting a noise ordinance exemption for this event's duration. Any questions or comments on this? Any objection to unanimous roll? Okay, unanimous roll shall be attached. Next item.
Item twenty-two, resolution by council members Herrick and Paris, concurring in the appointment of David Norwood to the Local Officials Compensation Commission with a term ending June thirtieth, 2032, and requesting immediate effect.
All right, again, we'd like to thank all our commissioners for their volunteer service. Dave Norwood is a longtime friend and employee in the Building Department and in the Mayor's Department for the, and a longtime Dearborn resident, so it is great to see him serve, and he will serve on our Local Officials Compensation Commission for a seven-year term ending June thirtieth, 2032. Any questions or comments on this item? Any objection to unanimous roll? Unanimous roll shall be attached. Next item.
Uh, no other items on tonight's agenda.
All right, thank you, Mr. Clerk. For myself, just a couple mentions. I just wanted to mention, which we did discuss regarding the ballots, absentee ballots. So, if you got an absentee ballot in the mail, just look at it, and, Mr. Clerk, what color stickers on the good one?
Fluorescent green.
Fluorescent green. Well, that's good. That doesn't match any of the high schools, so that's pretty neutral. Kind of Halloween green. So, if you get a Halloween, or not a right banana, green, right? Sticker on, on your ballot, that's the one you want to return, okay? It's just for absentee folks. The rest of the ballots are all going to be correct for our early voting and so on, and for day of election. So, just keep in mind, if you do receive a second absentee ballot, that that's the one that you want to use with the sticker on it. I wanted to make sure that everybody knew that. I know we touched about it a little bit. Then I wanted to take a moment to, hopefully, the residents received our, is this the fifth issue, Jackie, fifth issue? Fifth issue of the Council Connection. So, I'm very proud of this publication here that my colleagues so supported me on and that we've been doing for the council. You know, with today's digital age and so on and so forth, this is the first newsletter created by the city council that is separate as a legislative body, that has a lot of good information, and, you know, we've been putting it out twice, twice a year for the last few years, so this is our fifth edition. It has a lot of good information on it, how to reach us, what we're doing, and I can tell you, folks, for me, I think, you know, I could tell you, it's a lot of work for our staff. When I first did, I was like, "Oh, we gotta do this every month." And I was like, "Well, let's try it every six months," and, and it turned out to be a tremendous value, I believe, to our residents. So, we know that everything is available digital, but this is nice for you to get. So, hopefully, in the next term, the, the council seated there will continue this, because I think it's good information. It allows some, a hard paper to get into your house and ways to access your legislative body and to also to see what events and what things are doing. We try to highlight new businesses. We highlighted small business grants. Our council members indicated we wanted to talk about the trash bins. And, yes, Councilman? Yep, so, we're, we're trying to make sure that we get out the stuff to our public, to our residents, and a lot of it might be, you know, stuff that you do know, but sometimes it's a good reminder, right? I mean, trash cans are not supposed to be in the street. They're supposed to be on the curb so that the street sweepers can get by. Sounds kind of crazy, but it does happen, right? So, these little things, and highlighting, we have a lot of new businesses that have opened. We try to highlight them, give them a boost, let them know what's going on in our city. And so, and of course, our parks, we have been talking to our parks, about our parks for a while, you know, tremendous amount of investment in our parks and what we have done to them. So, hopefully, you do get an opportunity to see that council connection in, in your mail, and doesn't just go into the garbage till you look at it for a little bit. But hopefully, hopefully, it continues for the future. So, I wanted to thank my colleagues for their support and, and all their input and proofreading. Councilman Herrick is our...
He's great.
Stickler for the, you missed it here, comma here, and I appreciate it.
That's my writer's background.
There it is, hey. Every one of the council, I can tell you, has a, a unique skill set to help, help that connection come together and, and make it be a unified message from our council. Very proud of the work that we did as a body to get this through and, and budget as well so that our residents have it, so. Councilman Elswoff.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to add on, this is, this is a great addition to the council, and I want to thank Council President for spearheading this. It's a lot of work, and hopefully, it's more than just a recycling opportunity to the residents.
Yeah, thank you.
Also, just on another thing.
Yes, of course.
This week, I had an influx of inquiries, and the council staff can attest to this. It was related to speed humps, inquiries, tree, tree branch issues, ordinance violations, sidewalk inquiries, alleyway inquiries, and they were just, you know, taken care of right away. So, I just want to thank the DPW and the Economic Development Department for all their hard work to answer in these right, uh, right away, and then I just want to thank the Chief of Staff and the mayor for your hard work. It's under your leadership that this was able to happen, so thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilman Elswoff. Councilman Paris.
Thank you, Council President. This question would be, and some comments would be probably for economic development, if somebody could come to the podium just to address some questions and possibly planning.
What do we, and ask the question?
Yeah. Is it, is it economic development?
Uh, well, it's inspections.
Well, she's one, okay.
Dealing, but yes.
Go ahead, Councilman, and if she's the wrong person, we'll get the right person up for you.
Here's my thought, but I know you will know the answer to this. I just need to clarify it, though. I wanted to ask something about the food truck ordinance that we passed. I will say that probably, unless there's been any changes, from my understanding, were they allowed right now, the, before we bring it up to planning in the future to try to expand, but what is the zoning right now that is involved for food trucks?
Yeah, good evening, Council. Kayla Bianchini, Planning and Zoning Manager. So, currently in the ordinance, they are permitted as a special land use in the B.C. General Business District and the I.A. Light Industrial District.
Okay. Yeah, the reason why I'm asking, there has not been any changes then that the ordinance actually went into effect September first. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. The reason why I'm bringing this up is, I asked several weeks ago, I believe it may have been an off meeting, it wasn't the council meeting, when are we going to start enforcing this? Because the reason why I'm bringing it up, as of today, and I've brought it up now a couple times, there are still at least fourteen food trucks that I see in gas stations, and I'm not going to say that they're all operating, but my question to you would be, gas stations, even if a food truck is not operational, are they able to store a food truck on the property?
I, so I would say, I know our enforcement team has, but there's a lot of them, to your point, has been going around and starting, starting the enforcement and ticketing process. Obviously, it's a continuous compliance issue, just to, to be transparent, but happy to provide an update. I know they have a schedule of how they're going out and, you know, timing it out and making sure that people are complying. In regards to your question about, are food trucks permitted to be stored on, on property? For the most part, the answer is no. It's because they are classified as a commercial vehicle under the ordinance, and there is limitations on where and how long you are able to store a commercial vehicle on, on private property.
Okay, because what I would like to have... Because what I would like to have is a report back about what our process is and progress towards enforcing that ordinance. I mean, September 1st, and look what today's date is. And I know, it's my understanding that some violations may have been issued, so I'd just like to get a status that, you know, where are we at? I mean, it's weeks ahead of time, and this council that I was involved in the decision-making too, that we added time to make sure that somebody would have compliance, to be able to have this in effect, that they have other alternatives. And still, yet, like I said, as of today, whether operational or not, just me going around the city, at least fourteen. So I mean, I'm just asking for a progress report on that and what we're doing about it, because you're talking about five weeks now.
Understood, Councilman Parrish. I'll be happy to pass that along to Jordan Torri, our Economic Development Director, to be handled by the appropriate division managers.
Yeah, I know what, Councilman, I know that we did speak Thursday because I did receive a lot of calls of people arguing violations, but I think what the Councilman's stating is, and that I think he does, but I believe this is my question as well, is that we would just like to know, is it, what is the process that you're taking? Because when we legislated this, as the Councilman indicated, we gave a buffer. So I know we're there, and I'm not, I know that you're ticketing people. But I guess, for me, I'd like to know, is it a notice? How many days? Then what's the next step? Is there court? Or is there, you know, so can you just give us the breakdown? I don't know if that's something you want as well. But I know you also would like to know the status. Right, but, because we didn't legislate that. We didn't say, you know, on this date, you have to ticket. It hasn't been ruled by this date. Because we want to give, we don't know if we have the manpower to do that, yeah. Or the manpower to do that, and we didn't legislate it with a funding to make it, you know, emergent. So I would definitely, and Jackie's writing it down, so we'll send an email through the correspondence, that we'd just like to know that, I know that you've ticketed people because I've gotten calls about it, so I know you are. The question is, though, what is the next one? Is the ticket an NOV? Is it an actual ticket? Do they have method to cure? How much time do they have to get out? And I do agree with the Councilman, I've seen many of them that are not operational because I know he made sure he mentioned that, which is good, but they're not supposed to be there at all, for sure, guaranteed. And I know you're the zoning manager, but there's no way you can park it there, so we know that. And I know you left it open because there's other areas where they could park it, such as storage and stuff, but it's not on the gas station.
Correct, most cases, no.
Which the Councilman is indicating, I believe, most of them that I've seen and you, I'm sure you've seen, is at the gas station. So if you could just get us how many have been ticketed since the inception, but more importantly, what is your plan for process? Because we want compliance, and we're not looking, you know, to, we want to make sure that it's done properly. But we also want to make sure that they know, because we did give them plenty enough time, like the Councilman's indicating. But more really, the process to what's going to be the end game, because is this going to go to where we have to abate? Because I don't know if we gave you that authority as far as pulling a trailer out physically, so I'd like to find that out.
Absolutely, understood.
Is that good? Yeah. All right, thank you very much. Councilwoman Herrick?
Thank you, Council President. I mentioned Rotary earlier today, and I'd like to just make a quick announcement. Dearborn Public Library and Rotary Club of Dearborn are going to be co-hosting a presentation. The Michigan Pollinators, a nonprofit organization, will be a guest speaker on Thursday, October 16th. The presentation will begin at noon, doors open at 11:30 AM in the library auditorium, which was refurbished in part by a seventy thousand dollar donation from Rotary Club of Dearborn to the Dearborn Public Library. So at that presentation, we will hear from the founder of Michigan Pollinators. We will be talking about what that organization is, and in particular, talking about mini forests and how they work, what the methodology is, how much space is needed for a mini forest, and looking at an example of a mini forest in Rochester. So the public is welcome to attend that program. It's free, and again, that's October 16th. We also have a number of seasonal events coming up here in October for Halloween, and our folks are here from the Dearborn Historical Museum, and I didn't, it doesn't look like they were going to talk about all the wonderful things coming up at the Historical Museum.
They knew you had it down.
Well, I was watching, I'm trying to, I'm looking at Matt going, Matt, are you coming up? So are you leaving it to me to do this? This Friday, this Friday, we have something exciting coming up, so Matt is here.
Matt, Assistant Curator, Dearborn Historical Museum, at 21950 Michigan Avenue. This weekend, we got two events. So first, for adults, on the evening of this Friday, from 6:00 to 11:00, we got our Fall Festival Brews and Booze, and everyone's welcome. We'll have plenty of alcoholic and non-alcoholic options. And then on Saturday is going to be our family event, Trick or Treating. We're going to have thousands and thousands and thousands of bags of candy and Rice Krispy Treats and all that. There's also going to be a bouncy house, there's going to be circus performers, all that fun stuff. So if you're interested, check out the Friday event or the Saturday event, or if you've got family, go to the Friday event, get some rest, come back with the family on Saturday.
There you go.
Wonderful. Thank you, Matt. And again, this time of year is so much fun here in Dearborn, so many neighborhoods participate. They have Halloween-themed activities with their neighborhood associations. But one of my new favorite traditions the last few years has been our Haunted Trail at Ford Field Park. So that's back again this year, October 17th through 19th, and it's got scares hidden in every dark corner from 7:00 to 10:00 PM that weekend. So reading from the announcement, but the chills don't stop there. Adults 18 and older seeking more intense scares can purchase tickets to our new witching hour experience. An extended hour of the trail with ramped-up frights exclusively from 10:00 to 11:00 PM Friday and Saturday evenings. And for those who prefer treats over tricks, bring your family to enjoy a sensory-friendly experience on the trail Friday, October 17th, from 6:00 to 7:00 PM. Tickets are not required for the special hour for families who have special needs. Also, Friday evening is our trunk-or-treat experience. This is free to those who choose to attend. You don't have to have a ticket to the Haunted Trail, but the trunk-or-treat is, bags are available from 6:00 to 8:00 PM on a first-come, first-served basis, goodies for the kids. And also new this year, feeling hungry? Guests can purchase cider and donuts and some more kits at the treat tent, and there are going to be bonfires and a fire pit there. So all kinds of new things. Please join us. Lots of fall fun hosted by the City of Dearborn. And I didn't know if our Chief of Staff wanted to add to that.
Chief, you'd like to add to that?
I have a few.
All right, well, let's, we'll go through the council, then we'll get to her to piggyback on.
Okay, I just didn't know if she wanted to say something about the Haunted Trail in particular.
Okay.
No, we're good. Okay. All right, thank you.
You've covered it. Anyone else from the council? Okay. Chief of Staff and Administration, you have anything you'd like to add?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Council Pro Tem, as usual. You've actually helped me scratch off a few of the events off of the list that I have. So just to kind of a few that I want to make sure that we're aware of. Doubling down on your comments about Dearborn being the place to be during the fall because of the amazing events, shout out to the Community Relations Team, the Park and Recreation Team, who've done a phenomenal job to building a family fun environment and activities during this festive few months of the season. So just want to start off with Elderfest at the Ford Performing Arts Center on October 10th, from 10:00 to 3:00 PM. So please, if you are available, please try to attend. We have a, it is a fundraiser for the Cops versus the Firefighters softball. As I always love to see them in action, so I think if you want to support the foundations, both on the fire side and the police side, please, you know, look up the information. They should be on social media, but it's October 12th from 5:00 to 7:00 PM. And as usual, with our amazing downtown development team who host great events in the downtown areas, we'll have Downtown Dearborn Bazaar on October 17th from 4:00 PM to 8:00 PM at Peace Park East. So please, if you have some time, the team does a really great job at really bringing some great vendors from across the city and region to be able to really try, provide a great experience. Also, we have Family Fun Day. Look at that, I'm like turning the page. This is amazing. We have Family Fun Day on October 18th from 12:00 to 5:00 PM at Peace Park East. The DDA, which is Downtown Development Authority, Trick or Treat on October 18th as well, from 2:00 to 5:00 PM in the east and west downtown area. We also have the Dearborn Fire Open House, which they do such a phenomenal job. If you have kids, please do bring them by on October 18th from 12:00 to 2:00 PM. The Dearborn Firefighter Burn Drive Pumpkin Patch, October 18th and 19th, from 12:00 to 5:00 PM, Station Two, the one that's located on Otter Drive. We also have Halloween Skates at our disc on October 25th from 1:00 PM to 2:20 PM at the Dearborn Ice Skating Center. Also, if you are a Dearborn resident, you should have received the Dearborn Magazine, and if you have, in the magazine, there's actually a cutout which you can take out, which has all of the events listed that, for the city. You can put it on your refrigerator and use that as a reference. But we welcome all of Dearborn residents. Again, thank you to our Communications Department, who has really worked really hard to make sure that that magazine was readily available, and we hope that everyone loved it. That's it, Council President on our end.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that, and I did see the magazine, it's really nice. You got a lot of people working on that magazine. So compared to our connection, I know it's a one-page or so. It was nice. It was, it was really nice. Chief, for me, I know that you mentioned, or the Council President Pro Tem mentioned about special needs, no ticket. Can we just elaborate on that? Is that for the trunk-or-treat? For special?
The sensory-friendly?
Yeah. Well, no, no, I thought there was something for, that were...
That's the sensory-friendly, yes.
Okay, so it's not like we had at the homecoming, where we're opening early for any events special?
It is.
Yeah, if you'd like to.
It is.
Yeah, if you'd like to come forward. I just want to make sure it is. That's what I thought.
Holly Phillips, Community Relations Director. Forgive me, I do not have exact details on it. My first day back was yesterday. But yes, it is opening early to have a sensory-friendly. It's very similar to All Stars Day. We wanted to take that same approach to the Haunted Trail and make sure that we had that available to folks.
It sounded like it, so I just wanted to make sure we highlighted it, because I know that people were happy with that event, and I know we did it for a year or so. It is going to be a timeframe that is exclusive to other members.
Yes.
Just for that. So, okay, that's great.
Yes, and we've been working closely with the Disability Commission to make sure that we're like listening to their suggestions on how to make sure it is sensory-friendly, so it won't be scary at all. We'll have the folks there to kind of, you know, be available. No flashing lights, no big loud sounds, so we're excited to offer that to folks.
Thank you very much.
I have a quick question.
Okay, Councilman Herrick?
So for homecoming, when we do that, they do reserve in advance with their families? Is that the case for this as well?
We are asking folks to register in advance, yes.
Okay, so we should go online to the city's website to find out how to register in advance?
Yes.
Okay, just to be clear.
Of course, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate that. All right, Ms. Clerk, anything from your department?
Well, I just want to reiterate what you had mentioned earlier, that the ballots have been mailed. We did about 3,000 of them yesterday, so some people might have already received those ballots, the new ones with the green fluorescent sticker on them. We did another 4,000 today, and we're going to meet our deadline of making sure that everybody has the replacement ballot by this Saturday.
Excellent. And, Ms. Clerk, is there any chance that someone didn't get the first ballot because you stopped in time?
Yes.
So that, okay, because I have people saying they never got the first ballot.
Yes, we did stop.
And I'm like, well, you sure?
Yeah, we were able to stop some from going through, for sure.
Okay, so that's, okay, good to know.
That's the reason why a lot of people didn't get the first one.
Yeah, and I didn't know that information, which is a good piece, because I've had some people call, like my mom.
Okay.
She said she has not gotten her first ballot. You've got to answer that call, so I said, well, we're going to get the second one.
Yeah, we're back on track. I want to thank my deputy, my election supervisor, my staff who've worked hard and honestly to immediately resolve the ballot issue, so kudos to them.
Excellent, yeah. So, Ms. Clerk, the second ballot, if you didn't mail out the first one, will still have that same green sticker on it?
Yes.
Just to differentiate, just to make sure?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. All right, thank you very much, Ms. Clerk. At this time, we are moving to our second and final public comment. Again, just a kind reminder, if anyone here would like to address the council regarding city business, you're more than welcome to step forward or be recognized, but we do have comment cards. I have one here in my hand. It is from Joseph Baragio. And just a kind reminder, Mr. Baragio, your name and address for the record, and then you have a three-minute time limit, which the clerk will let you know when you're 30 seconds away.
Joseph Baragio, address 9958 Frederick Street, Dearborn. I'm a South End boy, and I was raised in, or reared, I don't even like the term raised, in a beautiful immigrant community of 45 nationalities that spoke 52 languages. And Clerk, I did get my absentee ballot today, so I've got it in hand. Thank you.
All right.
I want to, I've got in my hand right here, it's a booklet form of the U.S. Constitution. I carry this handily with me around all the time. The first, the first 10 amendments, the Bill of Rights, the very first amendment, is freedom of speech in this country and freedom of religion. Well, we don't have freedom of speech anymore in this country, and it's been made so by the man who has soiled the White House. The only people that have free speech under him are those that embrace his policies, his actions, and his agenda. Those who criticize or raise questions do not have free speech, and he has gone so far as to make an enemies list out of these people. This is, this is un-American as you possibly can get. Now, there are limitations to free speech in this country, strong limitations. There, and this is the 1850s roughly, there was a man named Marshall, not the Thurgood Marshall that we had during our time, recent time periods, who was a great Supreme Court Justice. This man noted, "Free speech does not entitle one to falsely yell fire in a crowded theater, the potential consequences of which would be a disaster for people trying to leave the building, causing injury, and even death." Well, that same principle holds true with regard to inciting violence. People who perpetuate hate directed at a certain group of people, it leads to people in that group being injured or killed, like the recent event in Grand Blanc, where this MAG supporter actually went into this church, killed a number of people, and burned it down. This is not free speech. Incitement is not free speech, and it will be challenged strongly in the court system. Now, my last point I'd like to make, I have Jewish friends. They communicate with me the horrific things that are going on in Gaza, outright genocide. The International Court of Justice, Hage, has cited Prime Minister Netanyahu as a war criminal to be arrested on sight, and a number of countries have cited. If he comes to my country, he's going to be arrested. And then they had a top minister named Smortek, who actually said in public, starvation is an acceptable, acceptable action of war. They're starving the children in Gaza, for God's sakes, and they're talking about a genocide that comes off the top of their head when it's actually going on right now in real blood and real time. Please give me a break, you people out there that turn your eyes from it. I want to thank you, all of you. God bless all of you. God bless you, dear sir and the good mayor of this city. Thank you.
All right, anyone else here to address the council? Yes, absolutely.
Tim Hawkins, DBW Director.
Tim Hawkins, DPW Director. I don't know, I was outside for a minute, but Southwest Outer Drive has a tracker treat.
Yes.
And it is Sunday, October 26th, starting at 4:00 p.m. I'd like everybody to come out, enjoy themselves. We will all be there. Set up a tent, if you'd like.
Yes.
But yes, and welcome to my neighborhood.
All right. Yeah, you know what? Are you in charge of that? Because I actually checked that. And that's the only event that they did, not on the Lions. The Lions are on the bye week, so I will be there.
Yeah, yeah. Please, please, yes. I am not in charge of it.
I'm saying whoever came up with that date was really thoughtful.
I think they're working on trying to put my wife in charge of that. They're doing their best to get her. So I'd like to just say, but no, everybody is welcome.
It's always a great event.
Yep, it's four o'clock.
But it usually rains a little bit.
Yeah, it does, it does. It's October. So it's at Penn Vassar Park, 4 o'clock on October 26th.
Thank you very much, Director Hawkins. We'll be there. All right. Yep, anyone here else to speak? Just step forward. Yep.
Hello, everybody. Rebecca Herman, Assistant Director for Programs and Services for the Dearborn Public Library. It is fantastic. We have so many great activities. I just want to highlight a few that are at the library, because they kind of got missed. But thank you, Leslie, for bringing up the Michigan Pollinators. I'm so glad we're able to host that for you. Coming up this week, actually, on Thursday, we are working with the League of Women Voters, and access to have a candidate forum. I'm sure I will see some of you there. So if you will come and join us on Thursday evening, I believe it's 5:30 for the city council members and candidates, and then 7:00 for the mayoral candidates. So we're looking forward to that. Bringing up the mini forests and things, on Saturday, if you, when you're done getting all your candy from the museum, stop by the library at 1:00. We have Relief Michigan coming and talking about the importance of the tree canopy in urban areas. Dearborn is a tree city, USA, and we know how important, and we talk about this. We've talked about ordinances that protect our trees. We have neighbors talking about folks cutting down their trees on a regular basis. So Relief Michigan will give us some really good reasons on why we need to keep the trees, and that's at 1:00 at Henry Ford Centennial Library. That morning, you can either sit in your jammies before you go get your candy from the museum, or you can come to the auditorium at Henry Ford Centennial Library. We are having an author talk with Charlie English, a Saturday. One is a little different, but this is a British author that we've gotten a chance to have. He's going to be with us virtually, which is why you can sit at home in your jammies, with your coffee and comfiness. Talking about the CIA Book Club is the book that this gentleman has written. And Dan Lodge, who's our librarian that is in charge of our author talk programs, is always great with getting these authors to tell about how they come up with their stories, why their stories are relevant to today's life, and things like that. So I highly encourage you that. One more plug is, every third Wednesday of the month, we have our open mic night. So anybody who is a poet, a musician, a storyteller, please come at 7:00. We don't make you sign up anymore. You can just show up. Even if you don't want to go onstage, professional audience members are really important. The folks that come, and we've got a great following now, really need some exposure. They need people to see them. And we'd love for you to join us again at that fabulous auditorium. Thank you, Rotary Club. That, at Henry Ford Centennial Library. Thank you so much.
Oh, your pleasure. Thank you for always coming forward with that information. That's excellent. Anyone else here to address the council?
Can I just mention the one date, and I'll leave?
Yeah, absolutely, Ms. Hattis.
The No Kings event is October 18th, on a Saturday. And I know you mentioned all these nice events going on in the city, but please, we want to keep these nice events in the future. So go to this No Kings event, and hopefully, we can keep a democracy that gives each and every one of us an opportunity.
Thank you, Ms. Hattis. All right, anyone else here to address the council regarding city business? Okay, hearing and seeing none. I want to entertain a motion adjourned. Motion adjourned by Councilman Herrick. We are adjourned.